We are ready.
Okay, thank you, Ma'am. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council's Legislative Session. Today is Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Madison.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. We now will move on to the invocation. Ms. Bowers, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would ask my colleagues to please join me in a moment of silence as we keep the following families in our thoughts and prayers. The family of Reverend Cooley, the family of Ms. Carol Moore Lyons, the family of Mrs. Ingrid Whedon Hyman, the family of Ms. Karen Crummel, and the family of Ms. Viola Mills. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. We now will move on to pledge allegiance. Mr. Allen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We now will move on to communications. We'll take a couple of minutes and we'll hear from Mr. Nisiel. Ms. Niel.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Council President Williams. Good evening, members of council. I just wanted to announce on June 15th during the council meeting, we will be presenting, DBHD will be presenting the 2021 Annual Action Plan regarding CDVG, ESG, and home funds. A public hearing will be held during the city council meeting and we will also have a 30-day public comment period that will go from June 15th to July 15th. The actual action plan will be available on the city's website for review and public comment.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Niel. Look forward to hearing about the CDVG funds.
Thank you.
We now will move on to communications and we will have Mr. Wayne Martin, who is our engineer. Mr. Martin.
Yes, good evening, council members. I'd like to take this opportunity to update city council on the status of the Verizon wireless deployment, small cell wireless deployment in the city. There were some recent questions and some recent news articles. I just wanted to make some clarifications. City Harrisburg entered into two agreements, one with new singular wireless, that's the AT&amp;T, to use city property for the installations of small wireless communications equipment. That was done in 2018 Resolution 15, and there was 20 cells included in that deployment. More recently, the city entered into an agreement with CellCo Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, to use city property for the installation of wireless communications equipment. Again, that equipment being city streetlights. That deployment is ongoing and there's been about 80 or so holes in various stages of permitting and construction with the ultimate goal of having 120 deployed, you know, in this first round of deployment. So again, under those agreements, the city property or the streetlights, those are located either in public right-of-way or within a park or other location owned by the city. There are none being placed on private property or property not owned by the city. The revenue structure for the AT&amp;T predates an FCC order, so we get $1,200 per site that per year annual rent that increases 2.5% per year. And we get a one, we got, we received the one-time payment of $2,000 per site. So somewhere between the AT&amp;T agreement and Verizon agreement, the FCC ruled that municipalities have a lot less authority in governing these small cell deployments and reduced what's a reasonable rate to $270 per site annual rent and a one-time fee of $100 per site. So that's what the city recovers in revenue for the Verizon deployments. The pole heights on the Verizon deployments, the gray poles, so there's three different types of poles. And what we agreed to with Verizon was that whatever streetlight style is out there, they're to match it as closely as possible within the guidelines of the agreement. So there's wooden poles and so typically wooden utility pole that many of our streetlights are affixed to can host these, these five, I'm sorry, small cell wireless facilities. And there's 14 of those in the city, in the Verizon deployment. The green poles, which are the decorative, those poles are 32 foot in height. And then there's the gray poles, which match our spun aluminum poles, the Cobra head aluminum poles, like on Front Street, for example. And those are 36 feet in height. And so, you know, just going forward with the permitting process, Verizon submits to the city an application to replace an existing streetlight with a new pole that will host their facility. And we check to make sure that the permit doesn't encroach upon ADA accessible access routes. We make sure that there's no conflict with city infrastructure. We make sure that the, that the design complies with our restoration requirements. And we make sure that the pole is selected properly and that the proper light is, is placed upon the pole or our lighting, you know, standards. But everything else is sort of governed, you know, governed by the agreement. Now, if there are, you know, issues with the construction or the contractor damaging, you know, private property or not doing proper restoration, Verizon is paying for a third-party inspector. That is supposed to catch those but doesn't always. So anyone, you know, has the, and these issues do arise, you know, contact 311. I would be the liaison for the city and can get damages paid or, or, you know, reconciliation for any, any damaged flower gardens, things like that. With that, I can answer any questions council might have about the deployment and I'd like to do that at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. Just got numerous calls regarding these big towers being placed all throughout the city. So thank you for giving us a certification of what's being done and also an update about how much the city is reimbursed for the placement of these particular poles in the city. Council members, I'll start with Mr. Madison. Do you have any questions?
Just one, is it possible to see a picture of the new poles?
I don't know if I can bring one up. I don't, they would be, a good example would be right in front of City Hall at the corner of Second and Market is one of the, one of the decorative green styles. You're probably not at City Hall right now, but I can get you photos of the various poles.
Yes, that'd be helpful just because I'm a visual person, so I'd like to visualize it or see it if possible.
So the one, I will, you know, sort of describe it, the pole dimensions as far as the, you know, the pole itself, the diameter of the pole itself, is about the same as the existing streetlight pole. There are additional boxes, if you will, there's one boxes, I'm sorry, there's one box at about five feet, which is the PPL meter. So it's a similar in style to a meter box. Then there's a disconnect higher up, which the city had to request that they be placed higher. We wanted it out, out of the way of the, the public right-of-way. So that, that disconnect can only be accessed with a bucket truck. There's a good example up on the screen. So there's a disconnect, then, then the streetlight and then, and then the antenna. So that shroud that you see at the top that looks like a drum, about 30-inch diameter drum, a shroud, about five feet high. With underneath that shroud are three antennas, roughly the size of a large keyboard, I would say, maybe a little larger, a little longer. And then there's some wires and some other equipment in there. So the antenna itself is underneath that shroud. Now, the utility-style poles will not have the shroud. Those are for the green and decorative. And that was, you know, that was at the request of the city to cover the antennas and wires on the, on those style poles. Some, you know, some municipalities leave the antennas exposed. We, we agreed to that on the utility, but requested that shroud cover, cover those.
Mr. Madison, any additional questions?
No, I'm glad we're addressing the issue.
Thank you. Ms. Green.
I don't have any questions right now, the visual did help.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bowers.
I agree with my colleagues. Thank you for addressing this issue because I received some questions as well. I guess I have just one question. I wanted to know if property owners are being notified prior to the installation?
So there is, yeah, that's a good question. There is no formal requirement in the Verizon city agreement for notification. There is a requirement in our street cut ordinance that, or maybe it's not even our words, I think it's our street cut standards that we can, you know, sort of hang our hat on and ask that property owners be notified. There are, you know, somewhat, there are some notifications happening, like, or telltale signs, I should say. So any kind of, you know, the utility company will mark where, where they're going to dig with the various color paints. So anything that says like VZ or with a pole location or something like that. But anywhere where there's a city streetlight is an eligible site under the existing agreement. So if there is a streetlight in front of someone's property, that is, that is an eligible site for one of these devices. But no, my office doesn't do any, any formal notification, nor do we really have the capacity to do any sort of notification to either property owners or tenants or anything like that for, you know, Verizon's work. But we will request that they do the notice that's required under the, under our street cut standards, which is basically just notice to the adjacent property owner. Hopefully that helps.
Yes, thank you. And I, I would hope that we are able to make that request of them in relation to the street cut standards ordinance moving forward. Because I think our residents are looking for some clarity on this issue. Hopefully they're viewing and listening or they'll view this following our meeting. But I would hope that we will be able to get something in writing to ensure that our residents are aware of what's going on.
So the formal note, the notice requirement under that is an actual letter that's hung on the door, just so, just so everyone's aware. And the form of that notice is already written in our standard. So, you know, basically it'll, we may tailor it for this project, but it basically gives them notice that there'll be, someone will be cutting in front, cutting the street in front of their house. And we'll have to tailor it to basically say sidewalk for pole, pole replacement.
Okay, I think something is better than nothing, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Mr. Allen.
I don't really have a question per se. I, I think, you know, I've read about some of the things in the news in terms of what some of the reactions were to it. I, I wish that there had been maybe better communication particularly to the impact in residences. I mean, I think we saw, and actually I watched it happen with Mark Krauski's house, who was well-publicized in the news. Like, yeah, if I was Mark Krauski, I'd be irritated as well in terms of how it went in and in some of the other locations. So I, I, I wish there had been a little bit more, perhaps some cooperative effort with our homeowners because it, it just seems a little rough. And then the only other thing I was thinking about is kind of the impact in our historical district with proximity and, and things like that. The one, the one, I think outside of the art museum, I found kind of troublesome because of how close it was to their entrance and the walkway. It's already a narrow walkway. So I, I was thinking about that and then ADA standards and things like that, just in terms of kind of accessibility. So I just wish there had been a little bit more perhaps cooperation on part of the, the company that they contracted to do it to kind of be better neighbors about it. It just seemed a little, in some cases, kind of harsh.
You know, I would like to clear the air on some of those. Before the pole was erected in front of Mark Krauski's house, he, he was in contact with Verizon. So I, I don't know if that is a known fact, but it is a fact. I have emails documenting the correspondence between Mark Krauski and Verizon before that pole was erected. As far as the, such kind of art museum, we actually, I was actually on site when, when that location was selected. And we actually, we actually moved that into the bump out to get it away from the entrance to the door. Actually, it frees up pedestrian space around the entrance. So if you think about, they have a ADA ramp that protrudes into the right-of-way and the existing streetlight pole actually blocked pedestrian route. So this actually improves the accessibility around, around the site. I'm not saying I don't, look, I wouldn't want one of these things in front of my house and I would probably, you know, take the same position Mark Krauski's taken with obstructing his view of the river. It's probably why he purchased the house. It's probably what he enjoys doing in his free time, sitting up on the balcony and enjoying the river view. But, but, you know, we, we try, you know, to, to do our best to work with the, you know, Verizon. We, I personally met on site with every, every single deployment except for the wood pole deployments, which, you know, were, were a late addition. Some of the Front Street ones I had to do via Zoom because of the availability of the, of the designer. And, and sometimes, you know, when we agree upon a location, it gets moved anyway because you have to get electrical wiring to that pole and it has to have a certain, you know, voltage and amperage and everything. And then you have to get communication wires to that pole, Verizon LAN, fiber optic communications. And then you have to avoid, you know, drainage infrastructures and, and gas lines and water laterals and all these other things that are underground that have to be, well, streetlight. You know, we have our streetlight electric too. We have our fiber optic communication for traffic signaling interconnects. So it, it's sort of an iterative process in design. So, you know, I found early in the process, even when you, you try as much as possible to, you know, avoid, you know, issues, there's always, there's always something. And, and I, I don't want to, I think, I don't want to say that this is true, but I believe that Verizon Wireless has done enough deployments to know that if they were to like ask permission from the adjacent property owner to put these for 100 sites, there'd be 100 noes, right? And so what, what do you do? And the FCC kind of gives them authority to do it anywhere. So it, it is, it is a tough, tough sell. I'm hoping, you know, you look next to one of these sites and you see three giant transformers on a PPL pole that dwarfs, you know, the, this, this facility. And you think, why, you know, why is that acceptable? And I don't know, right? I don't know, wooden poles are ugly too, in my opinion, but we have them. And so I, I don't know the right answer. I, I'll do whatever I can to assist the residents of Harrisburg to not, you know, diminish the value of their property. But at the same time, you know, the federal FCC order does restrict what we can do. And, you know, so far Verizon's been very cooperative with any asks, you know, and even if we get a pole moved, like SaveRising says, okay, let's not put one there because the resident doesn't want it. That doesn't mean AT&amp;T won't want to put one there, right? I mean, we have an agreement with AT&amp;T that allows them the same option. So, yeah, it's, it's tough. I, I get, I can relate to, to the concerns and we'll, we'll do our best.
All that being said, like, and I, I recognize how complicated and even convoluted it can be. I think that just really further provides explanation of why any type of communication would probably be helpful, you know, particularly when it, particularly when it's impacting your personal property. Not just saying I care less about a business, but particularly like a homeowner and some of them there, some type of cooperation, explanation, any of those things, I, I think would be, would be helpful. And I'm not putting that on you, Wayne. I think that that is really sometimes responsibility of anyone who's contracted to do these things. Like, I mean, we had the same issue, you know, we talked about last week with the signs going up for, you know, moving your cars from the street, but no one knowing when that would be and how long that would be. And when you're doing that in a small block, the disparate impact on, I mean, a lot of it just comes down to, you know, trying to be good neighbors with the people that live in our city. And, and that's, I think that's all we can ask. But I think in this case, I, I would love to see more, at least interaction or communication with that. And I, I mean, I'll leave it at that for now.
And about the historical review, they, they do go through some sort of historical review. I'm not in that, in that loop of what Verizon goes through, but one of the, one of the outcomes, so they had a series of, of sites planned for Bellevue Park. And through that historical review process, there was a comment that the heights of the proposed pole, so if you think about Bellevue, it's all the, you know, the short, you know, very short, like 10-foot decorative post tops. And the proposed sites were, I think, more than 50 or three times the size of the existing structures and the poles would exceed 10% of the adjacent structure's height or something like that. So for whatever reason, Verizon, you know, I don't know if they're, how they're governed, you know, through the FCC order, but they, they decided to either halt or, or, you know, let's say pause those sites. So there is some review and I, and I don't, you know, it's not at the municipal level. It's triggered by whatever, whatever, whatever federal order they're under. But there is, there is some mechanism and there was one on North Street, which was requested that it be painted green as opposed to the surrounding gray because at one time they were green. And so they made that change as well. So, yeah, yeah, I, I get it. And, you know, I was thinking the other, in the future, there may be things that can be done. I think there's probably density restrictions a municipality can set by ordinance. You know, so for example, you, you don't have maybe, the next, you know, deployment doesn't put a pole, you know, right next to another one or, or something like that. So there are things that can be, can be restricted, restricted. But we have to, you know, collaborate on that and what, what that might look like and see what other municipalities are doing.
Okay, thank you. Moving now, Mr. Majors.
Thank you. I think my colleagues already asked the questions that I was, was, was going to ask, but yeah, anything we can do to improve communication on our front end with residents as we continue, as a deployment continues would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Ms. Daniels.
Another questions were already asked. Mr. Mark, will you be on for the rest of the meeting?
I certainly will.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Wayne. I appreciate you coming to my, and giving us an explanation because we had several phone calls coming to the city council chambers, you know, and they were inquiring about the poles that would be installed throughout the city of Harrisburg. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Council members, we now will move on to curtsy of the floor. Mr. Petrowski, is there any residents or constituents who would like to speak before council at this time?
Now is the time for public comment. If you would like to speak during this period, if you could please raise your hand. If you're calling from a phone, you would hit dial star nine to raise your hand. All right, we have a, Dan, if you can please identify yourself for the record.
Hi, this is Dan McGregor. Do you need my address as well?
Yes.
268 Cumberland Street, Harrisburg.
Thank you.
All right, so my concern is around limited parking in the city and a couple of laws that are actually at state level, which I know you don't have jurisdiction over. But today, I noticed someone else getting a ticket outside of my house and I wondered why, because I've never seen anyone get a ticket there before. And then I looked at the ticket, it says they have to be parked 20 feet from the crosswalk, which I did not know. And I, and it is a state law, but I'm wondering if the city council could look into if we need to enforce this law, if it could be changed, because it really seems excessive to leave 20 feet. And I did some research around this issue today. But just the fact that standard parking is now ticketing for something they weren't before, there's no clear signage on where the 20 feet starts. Like, there's not a no parking sign at this particular location. Yeah, so that's basically my comment. I do have, I don't know if I'm allowed to show like images or anything, but I took a picture and like made a little map of the neighborhood, just guesstimating how many spots we're losing to enforcing this rule. And then, yeah, yeah, it's basically.
Okay, Mr. McGregor, do you have pictures?
I do, yeah.
You can go ahead and show them, please.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think he has the capability as a, but you can send an email to publiccomments@harrisburgpa.gov and I'll make sure that I forward it to council members.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGregor. Anyone else, Mr. Petrowski?
Anyone else would like to speak during this time, if you could please raise your hand? Hey, I'm unmuting Winnie O., if you can please identify yourself for the record.
Yes, this is Winnie O., S.B., local president, House of Representatives. I have a few questions.
We're having some trouble, trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me?
It's, it's very distorted.
Oh, pretty well. How about now? Is it any better now?
Little better.
Okay. All right, yeah, this is Winnie. Can you get hopefully better? Okay, let me pull back up my question. My, my question slash comments have quite a few, I'll be very quick with that. Just on a high level, I realize for a lot of these projects that are being discussed, folks who are not on the call or, you know, really don't, may not have time to go through their full hour, hour and a half, you know, whatever, how, you know, law, however long these videos had to be. It would be nice if perhaps we get summary links. I know perhaps maybe they may not be like detailed, like detailed, detailed information available, but it would help to have some sort of link provided so people can go and actually follow up if they're interested in learning more about these projects. Because, you know, between the Veteran Village, the, you know, ordinances that are being passed, the 16-unit project coming up. Yeah, so high level, we'd really appreciate it if we've got provided something to give us a bit more context on these projects. And yeah, also looking back on the last video from the session, I believe from the first, I was catching up on that. And I realized that, oh, Lord, I forgot his name. He was asked, I believe by Dave Mann, that kind of question with directly asking about, you know, what would be the cost for the affordable having units of their building? And he didn't quite directly answer it. So if maybe we could have a follow-up on that or if you could provide that information. I understand he referenced that 80% or less income was that, was that hit at 47K? But it still didn't clearly state, then what would be that affordability range? I think it would be helpful not only to give that, but also address perhaps on some of the, some of the implied challenges. Because he kept on mentioning that word, this challenged neighborhoods and certain challenges that apparently have been drawn up. It would be great. So it would be great. It would be great to get that, um, and you know, for the retro responsibilities and the rest, I'll just admit later. Um, yeah. And also, yeah, also to get more information on that, if y'all could tag the South Allison Hill safety protocol link for information. I think people would be really interested in that as well. Um, because they know he would, he had mentioned something about, um, the challenges in the neighborhood construction theft or something, that people have to deal modular, um, structures. And that was problematic on other levels that I don't think he, he really like noted. But to me, I will almost, I could almost say that it was very dog whistle, you know, a language, but that's just my, you know, perspective. So, for what it is. That's that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winnie O. Anyone else, Mr. Petrowski?
Last call for a public comment. Anyone would like to speak at this time? Please raise your hand. Cole Goodman. You're unmuted. If you could please identify yourself for the record and your address.
Um, hello, council. Uh, my name's Cole Goodman. Uh, my address is four 23 Walnut Street. Uh, and I had a two-parter question. My first question is with the development that is being proposed, uh, for our homeless residents, uh, by, uh, the Penn Dot Building. I was wondering if council got any, um, up, um, update if that resident, uh, residency will be in a floodplain. Uh, if, uh, I don't know if at this time council president could address that or any of the city council members. And my second part, uh, question would be, uh, if council had any idea when, uh, you guys will be getting back into in-person council meetings. Um, so I don't know if that can be addressed at this time, but I just wanted to ask that during the public comment portion. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Um, Cole, that is not in the floodplain and we will be resuming in-person meetings August of 31st will be our first meeting.
Thank you, council president.
You're welcome.
All right, next we have, uh, Crystal Davis, if you could please identify yourself for the record. You are unmuted.
Hi, everybody. My name is Crystal Davis. I live at 1425 Regina Street. And I would just like to, uh, talk about the, um, the blighted properties, the trash. Um, I've been very, uh, interested in some of these, uh, health hazard locations, uh, in our city, um, and wanting to, them to be cleaned up. Uh, but there's one location, 2100 Block of Jefferson Street. Um, my citywide cleanup campaign was there and I want to thank, um, the Public Works Department, Dave, for going and cleaning up, picking up the bags and everything that we filled there. But there was a vehicle there that was not removed. And so therefore the bulk items, beds, wood, boards could not be removed. Now, since that property has been abandoned for years, um, I wanted to know what procedure has to take place for this vehicle that's on that abandoned property to be removed so that the city can continue the cleanup efforts there.
Ms. Davis, they have an abandoned, uh, unit here in the city of Harrisburg. Uh, you would call the 311 number and that extension would give, would, uh, connect you with the abandoned unit. And they will go out and tag that car.
Thank you, President Williams.
You're so welcome. It may take them 10 or 15 days to get someone to, uh, actually tow the vehicle, but once they put the tag on the car, they certainly will pick it up.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, um, Pamela Parsons, you are unmuted. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Thank you, Pamela Parsons. Holly Street, near, um, near 18th on South Allison Hill. It's interesting that, uh, Crystal Davis mentioned abandoned car because that is my issue as well. The block of Holly Street between 17th and 18th and around the corner on 18th, uh, heading north, there are several garages. And one, and the city was very good about coming and tagging all the abandoned cars on that block of Holly Street between 17th and 18th, and they were very quickly removed, which I really appreciated because that street is narrow and it is two ways and it makes it very difficult to get up and down that street sometimes. Because people can park on both sides of the street. Uh, in, but the entire block from 17th Street to 18th Street on the north side of Holly Street is completely filled with cars again. And at least half of them have no license plates and no and not current inspection stickers. And it, it's just, it just feels like the city comes, does their job, cleans it up, and within, within a month's time, it's filled again. Is there anything that we can do about that continually having cars there that do not run?
Um, I'm going to turn that over to our public safety committee chair, Ms. Green. Uh, would you please look into that and, uh, maybe call the abandoned unit here in the city of Harrisburg and try to work out, uh, to find out who owns our, what garages there have a license permit to do the automotive repair there, because that's what's happening around the city. Is that these pop-up automotive repair shops are coming throughout the city and they're abandoning cars on our city streets. So would you look into that for me, please?
Yes, I will, President Williams.
Yeah, those, those shops are not, are, uh, not new, council president. They're not, they're not pop-up ones. They've been there for quite some time. I mean, in the nearly four years that I've lived here. It's just with, since the pandemic, you know, the number of cars that show up and I personally do not care if they sit there for a little while, while, while they, they are being worked on. But, you know, to move them in and out of a garage, but when it's completely parked full from 17th to 18th, and then it's parked on the other side, and then sometimes people double park, you just simply can't get up and down the street. And so I, I don't think it's an issue of, um, pop-up. You know, let me be really clear. It's not really an issue of pop-up garages, but maybe the existing garages are taking too many cars at one time. Or there are people who see that as a convenient place to dump a car because the garages are there and it'll just get lost in the shuffle.
Well, give Ms., give Ms. Green an opportunity to look into that, Ms. Parsons.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My other question is about public comment. When we are in person at a city council ma- a city council meeting or now when we are speaking via Zoom, we are always asked for our name and address for the record, which, which I understand. And I also know that, you know, the Zoom meetings here are being recorded. And I apologize, I'm outside. Um, they are being recorded. But if one mails in or emails a comment for public comment, I know they're not going to be read out loud. Um, Vice President Allen shared that with us last week, but what happens? What will happen to those written comments? Are they going to be included as part of the record? How will we know that they've been received? Will everyone on council get a copy of those? Um, I'm just wondering what that process is. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And Ms. Parsons, they certainly will be included as a part of the record. As far as your response is concerned, uh, Mr. Petrowski, do you ever send out a response that you received any written comments?
If there's any, uh, if anybody submits a public comment, I just want to correct for the, uh, gentleman that, uh, was emailing before at moment, just indicated that I said public comment. So it's public comment. Um, at harrisburgpa.gov, but I usually forward, forward to city council, um, and then I'll send an email notifying that person that I received the message and forwarded to council.
Thank you, Mr.
Okay, and all city council members get a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Kirk.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Is there any additional, um, constituents or residents that would like to speak?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Petrowski. We will move on to approval minutes. Council members approval minutes of, for the legislative session of May 25th, 2021. Is there any deletions, corrections or admissions? Hearing no response, missions, uh, the minutes will stand approved. Reports of committees report from Chair Allen on the work session of June 1st, 2021. Mr. Allen, are you ready with your report?
I am, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, for discussion at the work session last week was the third proposed, uh, budget reallocation of 2021, resolution 41. Uh, this is a, a resolution specifically, um, dealing with an appropriation for the, um, the solicitor's office, and it is to provide for the purchase of a microfilm equipment, uh, to help as we prepare for, uh, submitting records for financing as part of the debt resolution that we're doing tied to AMBA. Um, we need to be able to scan past financial records, be able to, uh, provide documentation. We currently do not have that capability. Um, in conversations with, uh, Neil, he does see that there's a value even beyond this particular project because we do not have anything that currently, um, contains that. So the appropriation is for, um, $80,000 to be able to set aside for that. Um, and they've looked at various, uh, products that range in cost. Um, so this would cover the basis in terms of what they're looking at as part of that. So, um, I encourage my colleagues to support this resolution. And that also ends, uh, my committee report.
Well, thank you, Mr. Allen. We now will move on to report from Chair Matson on the work session of June 1st, 2021. Mr. Matson.
President Williams, one moment, I'm having a technical issue.
Okay.
Uh, either somebody can help me to report or I'll sit real quick.
Okay, what do you want to do? Someone else to read your report? Are you, come back to you?
Yeah.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Report from Chair Majors on the work session of June 1st, 2021. Mr. Majors, are you ready with your report?
Uh, yes, President Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Major.
On, excuse me, on June 1st of 2021, the Public Works Committee met to consider, uh, one bill and one resolution. First was resolution 38 of 2021, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into an easement agreement with Crown Castle Fiber LLC for the purpose of ins- installing underground fiber optic cable within public, within various public rights of way and Riverfront Park for the Penn National Insurance Building. We heard from, uh, Mr. Martin on, uh, that project as well as, uh, Mr. Shy from Crown Castle. Uh, during the conversation, we discussed, um, the amount of time that it would take to conduct a project as well as the, uh, the cost per square foot and the easement that was, uh, put into for, uh, this project, which was $4.50 per linear foot. Uh, members of council, uh, raised questions about how that was calculated by the city of Harrisburg. Uh, following the meeting, Mr. Martin provided, uh, me with the, the easement price determination, which I, uh, just recently sent to council and that was my apologies. I, uh, I thought I had sent it earlier and I forgot to send it. So, uh, what it does note is here, and I can read the summary as follows. Uh, the question which was raised at the meeting about the easement price, how the easement price was determined, and it can be summarized as follows. City ordinance 51 of 1982 established an annual fee of $5 for each pole and $5 for each mile of wire for overhead utility attachments. Typical spacing in an urban environment is 125 feet. That would be 44 poles per mile or $225 per mile per year over a 20-year period. That would yield $4,500 or 85 cents per, uh, linear foot. If you bring that fee forward into 2016 and compound increase at 4%, that would come to $3.23 per linear foot. Uh, that was rounded up to 350 for the easement agreement that was entered into in, uh, 2016, uh, and that was, uh, a similar easement. And, uh, in 2019, an additional dollar per linear foot was added to the Zito agreement as a surcharge for easement in a park. Uh, and that's also in the forwarded in the email that was sent to everyone. So the current easement agreement proposes the same $44.50 per linear foot fee for a 20-year easement in a park. So the easement agreement, uh, would be consistent with the last easement that we did in a public park. Uh, additionally, uh, it was asked about any closing or front tree to do the project. Uh, and as we all know, front tree is a state road, so it will be working and will be working in conjunction with Penn Dot on how it's going to be maintained. And it has to continue to have a, uh, a flow of traffic, uh, since it is a, a, a Penn Dot managed road. Uh, and, uh, how long, uh, is the, we asked about how long the impact would be. So, um, they think will be a few nights of, of work. And there's, uh, 41 feet that needs to cross on front tree between, uh, to get from front tree to, to Strawberry Street. So those were all of the questions that were posed from resolution 38. And I would ask that my, uh, colleagues would vote in the affirmative on resolution 38 of 2021. Additionally, there was bill four of 2021, which is a witness in many of the city of Harrisburg's officials from traffic control map pursuant to chapter 3 dash 109 of the codified ordinance converting Monroe Street from two-way to one-way operation between Burbank and Hur Street. Uh, again, we've heard from Mr. Martin, the city engineer about this. Uh, the original agreement, uh, excuse me, the original data was collected back in 2019 regarding, uh, the traffic control, traffic flow in that area. This is the area that, uh, above, uh, Downey School, uh, along Cameron. This is a, a area that people have used, utilized, uh, to, you know, gain entrance to the school, uh, off of, uh, Hur Street. The process slowed, uh, and then last year due to COVID, you know, there was not a lot of, uh, of, of of traffic flow and movement to, uh, the school along that area. So, uh, the project has sort of got, um, held back a little bit. So, uh, now we're looking to, uh, get this, um, taken care of, uh, and, uh, eliminating that two-way, uh, traffic so that we can reduce traffic and allow folks to be able to ex- access that area. Um, as well, there's also a, a daycare center in that area. So we want to, uh, improve traffic flow and ensure that all of those that are around are safe. And I would ask that, um, council members will vote the affirmative on bill four of 2021. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Uh, Mr. Matson, are you ready to give your report on June 1st, 2021?
I am, President Williams. Thank you for your patience.
You're welcome.
Um, on Tuesday, Ju- June 1st, the Community and Economic Development Committee, uh, met to discuss resolution 43 of 2021, a resolution approving a preliminary final land development plan to convert the existing 10,920 square foot building, formerly the regional headquarters of the Salvation Army, located at 1122 Green Street into a 16-unit apartment complex with associated off-street parking. Uh, Planning Director Knight gave an overview of the land development plan. The applicant, Jonathan Bowser, was president as well. Uh, the committee then asked questions of note. Mr. Bowser noted that his, uh, firm works with, uh, MWBE businesses and will likely use them for this project. Mr. Bowser committed to, uh, uh, sharing information on the bidding process for local small businesses or contractors. Uh, all 16 units will be market rate. Uh, the project does have ample parking. There will be 16, uh, apartments total and about 35, uh, parking spaces for, uh, those units. Uh, given the project is in compliance with all city rules and regulations, I would ask my colleagues to vote in the affirmative for resolution 43. Next, the committee discussed resolution 44, uh, resolution approving a preliminary final subdivision and land development plan consisting of the subdivision of consisting of the subdivision of 23, 238, 248 Hummel Street and the construction of six single-family townhomes located located at 238, 248 Hummel Street and 1216 Kitten Titty Street. Planning Director Knight gave an overview of the project. Gary Lanker with Tri-County HTC was the applicant and was president as well. The committee asked questions of note. The housing is targeted for low to moderate income families. The applicant did receive an RCAP grant from the governor's office and accredited Senator Santa with helping with that RCAP grant. There will be new security cameras installed in the vicinity, and the applicant will share opportunities to bid on the project as well for our local contractors. And the applicant will be using the LERTA program. Given the project is in compliance with all the city's rules and regulations, I would ask my colleagues to vote in the affirmative of Resolution 44. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matson. Moving on now to ordinance of first reading, Bill 8 of 2021. Mr. Petrowski, please read it into record.
Bill 8 of 2021 is an ordinance of the Council of the City of Harrisburg, Dauphin County, Pennsylvania, to authorize and direct the incurring of non-electoral debt through the issuance of a one-or-all more series of tax-exempt or federally taxable general obligation bonds in the maximum principal amount of $35,000. The Series A Bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay all or a portion of the cost of a project consisting of one or more of the following: one, the current refunding of the city liability to AMBAC Insurance Corporation with respect to the city's general obligation refunding bonds, Series D of 1997, and general obligation refunding notes, Series F of 1997, the refunding project; two, the funding of one or more reserve funds with respect to the Series A Bonds; and three, the payment of the cost of issuing the Series of A Bonds or any or all of the same, stating the purposes of the refunding project, describing certain prior projects, and ratifying and confirming the originally estimated realistic useful lives thereof, and stating the remaining useful lives thereof, setting forth the estimated completion date for the refunding project, authorizing and directing the proper officers of the city to prepare, certify, and file the required debt statement, a borrowing-based certificate, and directing the proper city officers to file such statement, and in borrowing base certificate together with a certified copy of this ordinance and proofs of publications with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, and to pay any necessary filing fees covenating that the city shall include the amount of annual debt service with respect to the Series A Bonds in its budget for each fiscal year, providing for fully registered bonds, date of the Series A Bonds, interest payment dates, provisions for redemption, and stated principal maturity amounts, and fixing the rates of interest on Series A Bonds and providing for book entry-only bonds, authorizing the proper officers of the city to contract with a bank or bank and trust company for its services as sinking fund depository payment agent and registrar, and stating a covenant as to pay the principal and interest without deduction for certain taxes, providing for the registration, transfer, and exchange of Series A Bonds, providing for the execution, delivery, and authentication of the Series A Bonds and the disposition of the proceeds thereof, approving the form of the Series A Bonds, paying agents, authentication, certificate and assignment, and providing for CUSIP numbers to be printed on the Series A Bonds, awarding such Series A Bonds at a sale by invitation to Stifel Nicolaus and Company or Stifel Nicolaus and Company, creating a sinking fund and appropriating annual amounts for the payment of debt service on the Series A Bonds, making certain representations and covenants under federal tax law provisions, approving the content and form of a preliminary official statement, and authorizing the distribution thereof and authorization, the preparation, execution, and delivery of an official statement, and the undertaking of certain continued disclosure, authorizing and directing the proper officers of the city to do all things necessary to carry out the ordinance, authorizing and directing the proper officers of the city to pay issuance costs, authorizing incidental actions, repealing all ordinances inconsistent herewith, and stating the effect of the. You're on mute.
I'm sorry, Mr. Petrowski. Thank you. We now will place that in Budget and Finance Committee. Please read Bill 9 of 2021. Into record, please, Mr. Petrowski.
Bill 9 of 2021 is an ordinance of the Council of the City of Harrisburg, Dauphin County, Pennsylvania, to authorize and direct the incurring of non-electoral debt through the issuance of in, of its general obligations bond, Series B of 2021, federal taxable, the maximum principal amount of $10,000 or $10 million, the Series Bond, B Bonds, for the purpose of providing funds to pay all or a portion of the cost of project, of a project consisting of one or more of the following: one, defeasance to maturity for the redevelopment authority of the city of Harrisburg, federal taxable guaranteed revenue bonds, stadium project, Series A 2 of 2005, defeasance project; two, the funding of one or more reserve funds with respect to the Series B Bonds; and three, the payment of the cost of issuing, issuing the Series B Bonds or any or all the same, stating the purposes of the defeasance projects, describing a certain prior project, ratifying and confirming the originally estimated realistic useful life thereof and stating the remaining useful life thereof, setting forth the estimated completion date for defeasance project, authorizing and directing the proper officers of the city to prepare, certify, and file that the required debt statement, and borrowing base certificate, and directing the proper officers of the city to file such statement and borrowing base certificate, together a certified copy of the ordinance and proofs of publication with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, and to pay any necessary filing fee, covenating that the city shall include the amount of annual debt service with respect to the Series B Bond in its budget for each fiscal year, providing for fully registered bonds, date of the Series B Bonds, interest payments, dates, payment dates, provisions and redemptions, and stated principal maturity amounts, and fixing the rates of interest of such B Bonds and providing for book entry-only bonds, authorizing the proper officers of the city to contract with a bank or bank and trust companies for its services and sinking fund depository paying agents and registrar, and stating a covenant as to pay of the principal interest without deduction for certain taxes, providing for the registration, transfer, and exchange of Series B Bonds, and providing for the execution, delivery bond, delivery and authentication of Series B Bonds and the disposition of the proceeds thereof, approving the form of the Series B Bonds, paying agents, authentication, authentication certificate and assignment, and providing for CUSIP numbers have been printed to Series B Bonds, awarding such Series B Bonds at sale invitation to Stifel Nicolaus and Company, and creating a sinking fund and appropriating annual amounts for the payment of the debt service in the Series B Bonds, approving the content and form of a preliminary official statement, and authorizing the distribution thereof and authorizing the preparation, execution, and delivery of an official statement, and the undertaking of certain continuing disclosure, authorizing and directing the proper officers of the city to do all things necessary to carry out the ordinance, authorizing and directing the proper officers of the city to pay issuance costs, authorizing incidental actions, repealing all ordinances inconsistent herewith, and stating the effect of date.
Thank you again, Mr. Petrowski. And that also will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. We now move on for ordinance for amendment. We have none this evening. We move on to ordinance for final passage, Bill 4, 2021. Mr. Petrowski, please read it into record.
Bill 4 of 2021 is an ordinance amending the city of Harrisburg's official traffic control map pursuant to Chapter 3-109 of the codified ordinances by converting Monroe Street from two-way to one-way operation between Rebek and Hur Street.
Council members, any additional questions, comments regarding Bill 4? Hearing none, please call the vote, Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Matson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill 4 passes.
We now move on to resolutions. Resolution 38 of 2021.
Resolution 38 of 2021 is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into an easement agreement with Crown Castle Fiber LLC for the purpose of installing underground fiber optic cables within various public rights of way and Riverfront Park for the Penn National Insurance Building.
Council members, any additional questions or comments on Resolution 38? Hearing none, please call the vote, Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Matson?
Yes.
Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 38 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 41, 2021.
Resolution 41 of 2021 is a resolution approving the third proposed 2021 budget reallocation.
Council members, any additional questions or comments? Please call the vote, Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Matson?
Yes.
Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 41 passed.
Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Moving on to Resolution 42, 2021.
Resolution 42 of 2021 is a resolution authorizing the city engineer Wayne Martin and the city grant manager Rebecca Valmer to act as the city's authorized representatives for the multi-modal transportation fund grant for the courthouse connection project.
Council members, any additional questions or comments on Resolution 42? Hearing none, please call the vote, Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Matson?
Yes.
Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 42 passes.
Now moving on to Resolution 43 of 2021.
Resolution 43 of 2021 is a resolution approving a preliminary final land development plan to convert the existing 10,920-square-foot building, formerly the regional headquarters of the Salvation Army, located at 1122 Green Street, to an 16-unit apartment complex with associated off-street parking.
Council members, any additional questions or comments on Resolution 43?
Yes, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Bowers, go ahead.
Thank you. I will not be voting in support of Resolution 43 of 2020. The applicant has no interest in participating in the city's affordable housing program. There are 16 units. At 20%, only three of the units would have been deemed affordable. After reviewing HUD's income guidelines, I believe that our residents who fall under the low to moderate income statuses would be cost burdened by this apartment. It would impact residents the city is seeking to retain. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, please call the vote, Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allen?
Sorry, hit the wrong button. I do have a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I apologize. I was hitting the wrong button. I turned off the video instead of hit the mute. Per Council Member Bowers' comments, the affordable housing initiative that we passed, we left that as a strongly encouraged, correct, and not a requirement based on, is a requirement that we put into it. I just want to recall that before I act on my vote.
Of course, we can't, it is, technically, it is a requirement, but of course, we can't force everyone to participate. A developer is at their own discretion whether they will in fact comply or not.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions or comments, Mr. Allen?
No, thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Mr. Grover.
Just for clarification, when we pass an ordinance, it doesn't usually affect existing applications that are already in the pipeline for an ordinance that didn't exist when they applied for almost anything. So so this ordinance came about after the process started for the particular applicant.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grover. Any additional comments or questions, council members? Hearing none, Mr. Petrowski, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
No.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Matson?
Yes.
The Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 41 passes, or 43, I'm sorry.
Moving on to Resolution 44, 2021.
Resolution 44 of 2021 is a resolution approving a preliminary final subdivision in land development plan consisting of the subdivision of 238, 248 Hummel Street and the construction of six single-family townhomes located at 238, 248 Hummel Street, 1216 Kitten Titty Street.
Council members, any additional questions or comments on Resolution 44, 2021? Hearing none, please call the vote, Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Matson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 44 passes.
Now moving on to Resolution 46 of 2021.
Resolution 46 of 2021 is a resolution approving the fourth proposed 2021 budget reallocation.
That will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. We now move on to old business. Council members, there any old business that you would like to discuss at this time? Mr. Matson?
Yeah, I guess it would go under old business, but we are having, I just want to remind the public, a meeting tomorrow at the Department of Public Works regarding the comprehensive plan. I'm excited about that. It will be at 6:00 PM and go, well, until folks feel that they've gotten their feedback. So encourage all the council members to attend and join us tomorrow and all the folks in the public as well.
Thank you, Mr. Matson. Any other old business council members? Okay, well, now move on to new business. Any new business council members? Ms. Green, are you aware of the opening of the firefighters' chest, I mean firefighters' positions?
Yes, we do have openings in our fire department. They've been putting out lots of advertisements throughout our city with like yard signs out just to encourage the public to apply because we are looking for local firefighters, especially minority firefighters. So I'd encourage everyone to apply to the city to be a firefighter.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Anyone else for new business? Okay.
Mr. President Williams.
Go ahead, Mr. Majors, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, sorry. I just wanted to also note for any city resident that, you know, may be still like, still dealing with some of the impacts of COVID-19. The Commonwealth does still have a rental and utilities assistance program that is available through the end of the year. You know, the federal moratorium on eviction is ending, it's currently slated to end on June 30. So if people that are potentially eligible to apply for that assistance can reach out to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania through compass.state.p-a.us to apply for that rental assistance so that they're receiving that they could be eligible, you know, we don't want to see, you know, folks put out of their homes or evicted from their homes as we're still dealing with this pandemic. So I would encourage that. And again, also note that for anyone that is interested in receiving a vaccine, there are several vaccine sites in the city, and they can reach out to the Department of Health website and find a location to receive a vaccination if they so choose.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Ms. Green, I'm going to come back to you again. Just want to give council members a little update that we, you interviewed prospective applicants for community service aides positions that we advertised.
Yes, we held, thank you, President Williams, we held some interviews over the past two days for the community service aid positions. I believe we had eight interviews so far for the finalists, and we still have a few more lined up. So we're looking to get those positions filled and get the training started within the next couple of weeks. So I'll keep you guys posted on that.
Thank you, Ms. Green. I thought we should just, you know, let the other council members know where the status of that was at. Council members, any additional new business at this time before we pass Renegardon? May I have?
Yes, President Williams.
I'm sorry, I didn't see, I didn't see you. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, and this is maybe for the administration. I know we have mentioned in previous meetings about.
rescue plan dollars. Are we planning to have any discussions about that as we move forward? Because, you know, this is providing cities with a, you know, a once-in-a-generation opportunity to do some significant investments in our communities. So I just wanted to know what the status of any conversations may be so we can, you know, begin the process of utilizing those funds to help our our city, our city and our residents.
Mr. Majors, at this time, we have not been in discussion, I have not been in discussion with the administration, but I am looking forward to meeting with the administration to find out what their plan of action is going to be.
Okay, all right. Thank you, President Williams.
I did ask for a plan, so I'm waiting to hear from the mayor.
Thank you, President.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn, please? Wait, before we adjourn, council members, please do not forget add to the public, we are going to have an executive session immediately after legislative session, and that will be to discuss legal issues pertaining to the city of Harrisburg. Council members, please, after the adjournment, go to the website. Mr. Petroski will put up a meeting code. At this moment, can I please have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Meeting is officially adjourned for legislative session of June eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Now we immediately go into the executive session, but go, but please go out of your your meeting notice here and go back into the meeting code that Mr. Petroski will send to you. Thank you, council members.
Thank you.
Thank you.